And we're going to ask everybody to rise for the invocation, tonight's invocation, will be given by Deacon Francis Zeeman with St. Lawrence Catholic Church. And if I can ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we begin now, all our prayers in the name of Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit. Dear Heavenly Father, please watch over all here, and please guide those in whom responsibility of faithfully following what's the best for our city. Please watch over our wonderful city at this time, particularly during hurricane season. And for all things that are possible, please, please, please help us understand what your will is. We ask this in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deacon. Appreciate it. Okay, a couple of items. Council, item seventeen has been pulled from the agenda at the request of Mayor Wilson. Okay, first order of business would be to approve the minutes of the June nineteenth regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meeting. Do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes you'd like to make? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as submitted.
Sub move.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. Okay. I'll wait till my presentation gets up. There we go. Um, is that the... Okay, that's weird. It doesn't show up that way on my screen, but it's okay. Council President just said that that agenda item is going to be pulled, this is the agenda item seventeen, but I didn't know that until just now, so I went ahead and prepared a slide. But the Auburn folks came down, and four of them came down and talked about, you know, what they would do and what they recommended for our city. Part of it is a comp study, which we really need to update for salaries for our city employees to make sure that we're competitive. And there are also some issues that need to happen to update our job descriptions so they're federally compliant. And among other things, Auburn University is the authority on government personnel matters. So they really are a great resource. They have a lot of experience. This item, or this study, has been budgeted the last two budgets and approved. So this is something that I didn't think would have any issues, but when it came up a couple of months ago, it was tabled. I have not added it again last time or this time. What I did do is reach out to the Personnel Board and ask them to review it with Auburn. They have agreed to do this, and they're meeting in about a week, so that's why I asked for it to be taken off, so the Personnel Board can take a little deeper dive into The issue we all face in planning city services for growth is the fact that we probably do not have the full-time employees that we need based on the growth that we've experienced over the years. I've tried to put together an easy way to look at this. You can see years 2012 to 2016, which was last term, we had a change in population. It increased thirty-two percent, while our, the change in full-time and personnel only increased three point two-three percent. Starting in 2013, personnel should have been looked at seriously. It has not been addressed at all, and when I took office, I knew that there was a serious problem in this area, because everybody that I talked to within the city were describing issues that were really just about being reactionary mode all the time, putting out fires, and really not being able to plan ahead or do anything proactive. So, you know, we have been doing the best we can every budget cycle to fill in some needs, and I think we've done an incredible job, but the truth is, is we had a lot of catching up to do since nothing had been done since 2012. We've experienced more growth since, you know, this term. I said 2016 to 2019, it's really just 2016 to 2018. It's grown another almost eighteen percent, so we're at forty-four percent, basically, and that's really since 2010, based on the estimated census. So while the percent says that we have increased full-time personnel by around fifteen percent, the reality is that most employees serve the greater population, and what I'm using in these figures are, is the population inside the city limits. The greater part of what we call Fair Hope is about fifty percent higher in population. So the reality is that the population is much higher, and, which would bring that figure up as far as growth, and the fifteen percent would be less. All this is to say that you have to do strategic planning on all levels and all departments. Personnel, it can't be left off. I mean, these are the people, and the way it's been negatively affecting us is, you know, these city employees are working very hard, but it is frustrating and to always be in that mode where you can't do anything in a very proactive way, and that is the reality. So we really have to get this, not only this study done, but we have to look at the structure of each department, because it not only affects our employees, but taxpayers pay for that inefficiency. So it's very important, and hopefully will be addressed soon. Our founding fathers established Fair Hope with vision and planning. They planned the downtown with wide streets surrounded by residential lots forming the heart of and foundation for what our city has become. It has been said that the great parks developed by Olmsted, who designed Central Park, and the lakefront parks later by Daniel Burnham, inspired Fair Hope open spaces and public parks, providing water access to all residents. Without this foresight, Fair Hope would have been just another sprawling city with no heart. The original vision was enhanced over the years. In the mid-eighties, the visionary US-98 Grassroots Committee spearheaded dramatic changes, planting thousands of live oaks up and down the highway with stringent sign ordinances, kicking off the desire for the city to even do better. And we did. Most of our history has been about vision and planning. However, I'm going to get back to my... The creative vision faded around twenty years ago, with reactionary decisions resulting in haphazard development and never addressing the approximate, approximately two-thirds of the area that makes up Fair Hope being left unzoned. It's not even county zoned. Just about anything can be developed in this unincorporated area, and no efforts have been made to incentivize annexation to protect the way we grow. Strategic planning must have a community-engaged process. Reactionary decisions have been part of Fair Hope's history for a very long time, and we can no longer approach planning this way. The input so far on the K-1 has been very helpful and appreciated by our citizens. Once the property is acquired, we will present the overview of the feedback, and I think it was just, it's a really good vision, all citizen-driven. We had citizen input affecting the first draft of the Greeno Road overlay, which will be presented at the Planning Commission on July first meeting, which the public is welcome to come to, to, this is a draft, there's no vote yet. We heard you when you said, "We do not want Greeno Road to turn into Airport Boulevard." This is a present, I mentioned it's not going to be a vote. There was also input received from the community engagement on the parking deck, an alley, which was presented before, in the work session before this meeting. Because of it, I think what came about was a lot better project. I hope you all agree. This is how strategic planning works. An item that is on the agenda tonight, item number sixteen, this is an example of how planning has been handled for many, many years before this administration. A decision being made with no regard to an overall strategic plan or your input. I have asked Council to pull the agenda, number sixteen, because it is moving forward on a planning agreement for an easement on the Triangle property, which is over a hundred acres of valuable city-owned parkland. There is no reason to do this in no rush. There are legal questions about the fact that the city-owned parkland, which cannot be conveyed to a third party without voter approval. Another concern is the fact that this is a governmental function. Governmental functions cannot bind future councils, therefore cannot be made in perpetuity. Regardless of these common sense laws, why has there been no formal process for community You should have a voice, it is your property. If you are here to speak on this issue, even though it may be tabled, I still encourage you to do so. Here is a wise Japanese proverb about vision. Vision without action is called a daydream. Action without a vision is called a nightmare. That has been the state of our city planning for far too long. This administration has been all about strategic comprehensive planning in every department on every level. We simply cannot afford reactionary decisions being made without you. Residents started a petition to support collaborative strategic planning process, which is starting soon through a restore-funded project. The same type of petition used when over twenty-four hundred citizens stood up to say no to developing on our most sensitive watershed, Tatumville Gully. You can find it on change.org under Citizens for Protecting Fair Hope's Quality of Life. It will serve as a roadmap for our future. So far, it has received over three hundred endorsements, and I hope you support this objective too, and put it in to counterproductive decisions with no regard to your input. And that's all.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. We'll open the floor to public participation. If you would like to speak to items five through twenty-one, if you'll come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, you'll be given three minutes.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Skip Jones. I live on St. James Avenue in Fair Hope. I've just recently started learning a little bit about the proposal to give a conservation, to a conservation easement on the, what's known, I guess, is the Triangle property. What I was going to say is interesting what the mayor said about the previous planning in the city, which resulted in our waterfront parks, which was a result, of course, of the single tax corporation giving that property to the city with perpetual use for the public as parks. In a way, I think this situation we're facing, which may have some legal constraints, represents another opportunity for the current city government to provide, maybe perpetual is not the right word, but to provide a guaranteed public use for this very beautiful piece of property. I also understand that the granting of a conservation easement can be done in a very flexible manner, in the terms of what's granted, what future changes might be permitted under the easement. And so I think it's a very worthwhile effort to pursue. I don't think it can happen right away, and I think the citizens should definitely have input into how that, how it's written, what is given up, maybe even exactly what property is put into the easement. But I think the idea is very worthwhile, and to me, it would perpetuate the legacy of providing public use for very beautiful pieces of property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Knight. I live at fifty North Bayview Street. I have been a resident of Fair Hope since 2011. I've been a property owner in Fair Hope since the mid-eighties, but my wife and I moved down here full-time in 2011. We were interested in the acquisition of the Dias Triangle site. We understood that in October of 2013, when the property was acquired, the citizens were told that the property was acquired to be used for the public use and not ever to be developed for commercial use. That was my understanding at that time, and that is still my understanding today. So I very much endorse the granting of easement to protect this property and maintain it for public use, and not for ever to be developed for commercial purposes. There's a lot of talk about how Fair Hope should grow. I think, as Skip just mentioned, one of the most wonderful things about Fair Hope was the foresight the colony had to maintain the public lands at the bayfront. I hope there's that much wisdom today to continue the legacy of maintaining open property for public use. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Allison Knight, and I live at fifty North Bayview with Chris. I believe that there could be no better use of land, of the land in question than putting it aside as a parkland that would never be developed commercially, especially in the face of the unprecedented growth we're experiencing. The bayfront parklands, as Skip mentioned, were given to the people of Fair Hope to be held in trust for every Fair Hopian, and I believe that these are Fair Hope's greatest assets. I applaud the forward-thinking community leaders that preserve those lands as public green space for generations to come, and I would love to see the same outcome for the lands under discussion tonight. Just as I came forward in the Tatumville Gully project, I feel the same way about this project that we're discussing here tonight. Thanks.
Good evening, leaders. I'm Jim Kellin. I live at three Victorian Drive. I've been doing a little bit of homework, and I think most people realize that I enjoy that kind of activity. I was kind of interested to see that Manjap had talked about the collaboration with the utilities. I think that's a good idea, but thinking about the Dias Triangle, I'm really looking not just at the triangle, but the Fly Creek Watershed, which the triangle is a key part of. And I want to say on the front end, I'm not against the conservancy of the property, so I'm not against that at all. I think it's a good idea. But there's many different dimensions about that process that I think need to be looked at and considered. Regarding conservancy, the most distinguishing feature of the conservancy easement as a conservation tool is that it enables users to achieve specific conservation objectives on the land while keeping the land in the ownership and control of the landowner. That would be Fair Hope, and the citizens of Fair Hope that paid for the property, for use consistent with conservation objectives. I think before we do anything, we need to understand that. I'm not against moving forward, I just wanted to make that clear. There's a research study that was produced called Fly Creek Watershed Restoration Project that was published in 2013, and it's a brand-new updated edition that I don't think has quite been posted yet, but that's coming down the line. And just for, at that time, they were recommending protecting that property as a part of Fly Creek Watershed in this 2013 publication. The following sort of database is, there's a clearinghouse of federal grant opportunities, and that's one source of looking at resources that can be utilized in that process, not just for the Triangle, but for that watershed. The EPA funds many things. In fact, there's all thirty-eight different funding programs offering nine federal agencies. In fact, the Natural Resource Conservation Service of the Department of Agriculture has already invested in the Fly Creek Watershed. In fact, Jack, you've been to my house, it flows right through my property, you know, and then through the woodlands, and there's a lot of things that we need to understand about that property. And then, let me see, this next page. This is an updated resource, I'm not going to read it, and you see there's this tiny print, but it's a whole lot of things in this region that go from the Alabama chapter of the Sierra Club, the Alabama Coastal Foundation, the Alabama, and there's a whole list of resources that are tying to the whole watershed issue. And then what I really want to get to is to say, specific to Resolution sixteen, the content of the agreement is the most critical part of that. I don't have a problem with you negotiating that, but my request would be that a citizen team, you have a citizen team that works with you in this negotiation, and they, we report back to the council before there's any consideration on a vote. And while I don't, I don't think that I'm necessarily anywhere near as knowledgeable or aware as a lot of the people in this community, I'm willing to serve for that. So if you vote to give Jack the responsibility to coordinate this, we need to understand the scope and assets that can make this a tremendous asset for the future of Fair Hope. So I'm volunteering if you want me to help.
Is this the mic?
Yes.
Get confused here. I spoke four weeks ago and was, had a series of questions about what the vision was for what this property is going to end up being. And like Jim Kellin, I'm not necessarily opposed to a conservancy, and I'm not in favor of development, but I do think it's, this is a classic example of where the devil is in the details. And I wholeheartedly endorse Jim's suggestion for a committee of citizens to participate in coming up with what kind of restrictions we're going to have on the property. The, I would like to make a suggestion tonight, that we consider that property being made into a botanical garden. And in my distant past, not so distant, but I lived in the St. Louis metropolitan area, and my wife and I were pretty active in the Missouri Botanical Garden in St. Louis. And it functions, and has functioned, for over a hundred and fifty years on seventy-nine acres, and is considered today to be probably in the top five botanical gardens in the world. And I'm not standing here and telling you that I expect within ten years, you're going to accomplish what they did in one fifty, in a hundred and fifty, but the facilities have accrued over the years, and they are leaders in plant science, both living and dead. They have, I think, the third or fourth largest herbarium in the world. They're intimately involved with medical, the medical institution town in St. Louis, working on plant science for food and medicine. And I believe we have a, the makings of that kind of a partnership here in town. We have the Auburn Research Center out here on one oh four. We have a plethora of master gardeners active in the community right now. We have a former mayor who was a botanist. We're raising our own plants. So we have the makings of the infrastructure to make a wonderful asset for the city. And I might, I should point out that in St. Louis, it's a huge attraction and hugely popular in the city, because it's free admission to all citizens, or non-citizens for that matter, tourists, and for anybody to come and enjoy. And I would like, I have, I guess that's my vision for what I think we ought to be shooting for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Great suggestion, Mike. My name's John Man Ellis. I live at one oh four White Avenue. Council President Burrell, council members, and Mayor Wilson. Every four years, the citizens of Fair Hope elect six officials to represent them, a mayor and five council members. It would be impractical for these six officials to take a poll or consult with its citizens for every decision that they make on our behalf. On more important decisions, however, there is an expectation that our officials seek input from its citizens on their will and desires. The use of public land owned by the citizens is one of these decisions. Now, there are a variety of ways the council and mayor can seek citizen input on these important issues. When it comes to the use of public land, such as the Dias Triangle, K-1 property, and the like, the most informed way of determining the will of the people is by referring to a comprehensive land use plan, which has been developed with extensive input from its citizens. We don't have one currently. Mayor Wilson has indicated that she will be undertaking this effort, presumably in concert with the council later this year. Your desire to protect the Dias Triangle as green space is one that I support, and hopefully most citizens do as well, and I thank you for that. In fact, I haven't heard anyone tonight opposed to that. However, your intention to effectively transfer oversight and control of this to a third party is not something I support. This is city-owned property. It cost us well over eight million dollars to acquire. Our money. The city manages all our other parks, ballfields, soccer fields, and the like. Why can't the city do the same for this property? Several good ideas have mentioned for use of this land, including what Mike Dudley had just indicated, in a botanical garden or an arboretum, sorry. Why should we turn over a hundred acres of city property in the middle of Fair Hope for the Weeks Bay Foundation, as good a work as they do, to police, whether it's in perpetuity or some other defined period of time? Council President Burrell, you mentioned at a previous council meeting that your desire to move forward now and place the land in a conservation easement is because you don't trust future administrations to do the right thing. Well, to that, I would say, what if the city council had stated that eight years ago, prior to your term, because they didn't trust you to make the right decisions that you're making today? That's not how democracy works. We elect council members every four years to represent us and to reflect our will, and if members fail in this regard, then they're not reelected. We can protect Dias Triangle as green space for years to come. Please don't take away the rights of its citizens to decide how the land is to be used today, tomorrow, and for generations to come. Please do the right thing. Slow the process down until you have a plan to work off of, a plan by the people, for the people, and of the people. As of four p.m. today, as Mayor Wilson pointed out, there were three hundred and twenty-nine citizens of Fair Hope who have signed a petition asking you to do just that. They're obviously not here tonight, but I think their voice should be considered as well. And I do thank you, Council President and the council members, for raising this. It's an important issue. I think we all want to see this green space protected, but what I'm offering is a suggestion that let's keep it within the city. I trusted you, I voted for you, and I presume- I voted for you, and I presume that the people that we trust in the future, we can trust as well. And if we don't, there would probably be a pretty big uprising by the citizens if that went against the citizens' will. Will, thank you.
Thank you, John. I just want to clarify, I want to clarify one thing. There is nothing in, that would be in the conservation easement that is not prescribed by the city of Fairhope or its citizens. Once again, there would be nothing in the easement that's not prescribed. It would just be somebody that's, that's counted on to manage this in 20, 25, 30, 50, 75 years in the exact manner. And there's going to be elasticity in that as well. It's not going to be firm, fixed, 100%. There would be elasticity built into this. They would simply be the vehicle or those people that would oversee and make certain that the desires of the citizens of Fairhope are carried out for the next 250 years. I want to make sure that, and I know you probably know that, John, but there's, there's no, we're not giving the Weeks Bay Foundation the authority to do anything with that land other than what the citizen would prescribe, and they would just make certain that that's what's being done.
Karen.
My name's Dean Mosher, 456 Oak Avenue. Yeah, interesting to listen to some of the misinterpretations and misunderstandings about the Dias Triangle. The Dias Triangle was not bought by the city to be a parkland. It was bought as a legal settlement because the prior mayor and council had broken, violated the law and rights of the owner, and was taken to court, and this was part of the settlement. It cost us nearly $20 million if you add in the law fees, the purchase of the land, and the time and interest on what we did, which is absolutely absurd. It belongs to the people. It needs to stay in the hands of the people. Whether it's used specifically for parklands, watershed, or what have you, the people need to make those decisions, not Weeks Bay, not any agreement you have with Weeks Bay. We need to get public input. We've got money coming for a comprehensive strategic plan. Let's hold off, Jack, on signing any agreement until the people have the say in this. You say you don't trust future councils? Well, past councils have put us in this situation. Let's make something beautiful out of it, but let's do it with the input of the people. Karen mentioned the tree planting project. That's one of the first things I cut my teeth on when I came here 45 years ago. I worked on the artwork and working with those folks. That was the largest privately funded tree project in the United States of its kind at the time. Gone on to do environmental work. I led the battle to save Tatumville Gully, and I'll lead the battle to save this for the people and not sign it away to anybody except the people, and let the people decide how it needs to be used now, and let future generations still have the ability for them to make the decisions. We don't know how we're going to grow. As Lincoln said, prognosticating has never been a great way to make a living. You've got to leave it in the trust of the people and let the people in the future also decide how that's going to evolve. We have an incredible opportunity with the monies that we've got coming for the strategic plan. Let's not do any please table this thing until the people have a chance to do it, or there's going to be a hell of a firestorm with the misrepresentations and everything else that's going on here. This is very dangerous ground you're on without asking for the full input of the people, and I say let the people help you decide first.
Can you tell me what misrepresentations you're referring to?
Jack, you cannot put a conservation easement is a forever document. It says, once you tie it up, that ties up the land use forever. Perhaps there are parts of it that need to be tied up as park and green space forever, but you have to understand by scale, this is 20 times the size of the K-1 property. We're growing east and south for the most part. That entire parcel is going to be in the epicenter of major growth for this community for the next 50 years. You need to hold off, get the input of the people before you turn it over as a conservation easement. That seals it up. There's no great hurry. Get the input, get the experts to come down here for strategic planning, and then make your decision. Tonight shows some sort of, something that just isn't necessary right now. I don't see why you have to make that commitment tonight. Thank you.
First, let me, you can take your seat if you'd like. You stay up there, because I'm, you can stay up if you'd like. So I don't see that, you said anything other than exactly what we are doing, and it probably will be tabled tonight for some other reasons, but we're saying the exact same thing, Mr. Mosher. We're saying the same thing.
You're not asking for public input before you sign.
There's nothing being decided tonight. We're actually not even entering into a conservation easement tonight.
Good.
The agenda item is to engage Weeks Bay Foundation to assist with a conservation easement. There's no conservation easement being established, even if we voted yes tonight. That's not what's going on.
Well, it sounds to me like you're going to table it tonight. That's a wise decision until all the facts are known.
Well, even if we didn't table it, we wouldn't know all the facts tonight because we're going to have that citizen input before we draft the conservation easement. This is, this would be step one to, to engage Weeks Bay Foundation, who, yes, ultimately would be the overseer of the property exactly as prescribed, but how it's prescribed is yet to be seen.
I still say you're premature before you get all the input on this thing to make sure it's the best. You cannot say you don't trust the people in the future to govern themselves or to make these decisions. Keep it in the hands of the people.
That's what we're saying, and I think that most people get that. They get that we don't want this being, being developed commercially in the future, 10, 20, 30, 50 years from now.
That's easy to do. A conservation easement is a different animal altogether. It needs to be very, very carefully approached, and I appreciate you're listening.
Yes, sir.
I hope you'll table it for this evening until the people have a better chance to deal, to understand what you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Am I allowed to ask something to the panel or stuff, but I don't think that's the whole thing.
I will, I will allow this.
I just would like to add that I think that the issue, the issue here seems to be the in perpetuity part. That's what I'm reading in that, in the petition that's going around, and I would just like to say, if founders had not put the Bayfront property in conservation for perpetuity, that would have been revisited over and over and over, and I think we wouldn't have all that land now. I think there would be hotels there and private residences and businesses, and I'm very happy that our founders had the foresight to take that big step.
I just want to mention, too, that this is, this has nothing to do with parkland. We all want parkland. We all want public use for this piece of property. That's never been denied. What we're saying is legally, in perpetuity, if we already have parkland, we can't designate it to a third party without a citizen vote. It's going to remain a parkland, and if there's any other future need, that, it's not going to take away from the parkland, but it is city-owned property for public use. That will not be that way if, well, first of all, citizens would have to vote for it. There's no denying that.
We're going to get to some of those legal arguments.
Jack, I'm only here for, to clarify.
Yeah, absolutely. Only giving up to them, yes.
I want to clarify what Allison just said. Allison, there are five different parks deeds that were done in the 1930s, all right? Each one of those deeds has different stipulations on it, on how it can be used. For example, Big Head Gully, back over in here, Abios Charbonne, had covenants in it to be able to be used for, to build a sewer plant because there was a gravity feed that fed into where this. But each one of those has different conservation easements on it. And I also want to let you know historically that in 1960, even though there were covenants on the Bayfront property that went by the American Legion down there, that a city council in 1960 decided those covenants were no longer in force, and it was a series of private citizens headed by Dot Jaeger and several others that stopped them by taking them to the state Supreme Court. And the edict that came back was basically, dear city of Fairhope, what part of no permanent structures don't you understand?
Okay, let's, let's not turn it into a public, let's not turn it into a debate.
But they weren't conservation easements, they were a grievance with covenants, and that's what we also need. Thank you.
Okay. All right, next.
Paul Rip, with the Rip Report. You know, when I listen to you guys talk about this, it sounds like you don't have any faith in yourself. This is city property. It's supposed to be managed by the city? You think we can't look after it? Now, one thing a lot of people don't realize is that the status quo that's been in office for 20, 30 years before this has made it a point not to do anything with that property, and has stopped any use of it, and we ended up in lawsuits, and it didn't cost 8.25 million, it cost 8.25 million and 3 million for attorneys. That's 11.25 million. Why on earth would we do this? I have no idea. I want to see who the foundation is, given the money. I want to see the contract, and how are you going to agree what you can do and what you can't do looking at a 50-year scope? I don't see it. I hope you take the recommendation of a couple of the gentlemen with the Citizens Committee. That should happen. Also, one of the sales points that the Weeks Bay gave you was an increase in property value. Well, Mr. Burrell, Mr. Boone, you live right there next to that property. You don't need to be voting on that either. You need to recuse yourself on that. How are we talking about giving away 106 acres? Because you're giving it away. If you have no control of it, you're giving it away. You're giving away 106 acres on one side, and on the other side of town, you're looking at two pieces of property that are 40 acres to buy. Doesn't make any sense. And the rush. What is the rush? What is going on here? I'm very skeptical about that. All of a sudden, because last week, the last county meeting, the last meeting, you almost pulled it off. You almost caught everybody sleeping, and you would have passed it if the people didn't show up at that last meeting. Now you've got people signing a petition. You have 61 people that watched that meeting on TV. You've got over 350 that signed this. You had 250 that showed up at the apartment complex, when we were talking about the apartments. And let's talk about that Fly Creek study. Not many people know about that. That Fly Creek study was done as an inroad for BP money. That's what that was, and that was going to be a private, I mean, that was going to be a thing between the city and Arthur Cordy and cross over the highway and all this. You know what the study didn't say? How can you have a study on Fly Creek watershed and not identify the problem? Never said anything about the flooding at Publix. Never said anything about filling the creek. Never said anything about dredging over and over again. The dredge materials coming down the creek. It's not coming in from the bay. How's that not mentioned in the study? Wasn't mentioned in the study because the study was framed that way. You could have paid them and asked them to put water uphill, and they would have told you that. I hope that you will listen to the citizens. That's the only major complaint that you're hearing from people. If you form a citizens group, and they come back unanimously, and the town says, this is what we want, so be it. That's what we're looking for. But to try to come in here and do it, and we don't know all the facts, or all the details, or anything that's going on, it's being rushed, and we know this is what was, cost us $3 million, was this same type of thing. And as far as what are we going to put on it? They've proposed every type of thing for that that you can get, and you know what happened? It was all killed every time because it didn't want anything done on that property. And that's what the mayor wanted, and that's what the last mayor wanted, and that's what the last mayor's good developer friend wanted, and that's what they've been successful at. And I have a feeling that there's a connection between those two, and if there is a connection, then this whole thing should be moot.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Corey Martin. I live 829 Summer Lake Street. Once again, I'm new to this community, but I'm hearing the same thing over and over, over and over. I haven't seen previous council. I really don't know the history of how previous council works, but I knew how the history of the government works as a whole, as far as representation is concerned. And it seems here that we're trying to set precedence that council has power and citizens have none. No matter what the issue is, it seems that that's the direction that we're trying to go. And what the people are trying to get you to understand is, it's not about your power, it's about your service. It's about you listening to what we as a whole pay tax for, and you doing exactly what we ask you to do as service people. And I don't want to set a precedent to where we have a council, and the people want something, and they don't get it, and power gets it. That's a bad thing. If that gets known or known nationally, we're in trouble. That's all I got to say.
Can somebody please tell me where we said we weren't going to get citizen input in any of this?
I'll tell you where it is, Jack.
I just, I don't get.
I'm Evans Holcomb, and I live at Fairfax Drive. On your number 16, it says execute. It doesn't say draft, and that's where everybody got bent out of shape. It sounds like the way it's worded that it's already decided on. You did not say draft. You said, we're going to execute it. I called Kevin today to tell him that. That's all, that's all I've got to say. We aren't against it. We just think the citizens need to know what's going on and have an input, but the way it's written, it says it's already a done deal.
The, and that is unfortunate that it's on the agenda like that, but I can tell you, the actual resolution that's voted on is not written that way, and it says that there would be a collaborative effort between the landowner and the organization to outline the terms of the conservation easement, and that's what everybody seems to be concerned with, that there's going to be no input on the terms, and I've said till I'm blue in the face, there's going to be collaboration on the terms. I'm saying it, and then the next person gets up and says, we want citizen input, and I'm saying you're going to have it. Then the next person gets up and says, you're not going to, we're not going to have it.
Why not have it first?
What you got in writing here, what you got in writing here.
We can have it when we have the comprehensive land use plan.
That's just the agenda. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is James Watkins. I live at 673 Middle Street. I'm a returning son of Fairhope. I just retired from the military. And just getting involved back into the community again, so much has changed in Fairhope. There's some parts I don't even recognize, and there's a lot that has not changed, but this particular property, this triangle property that everybody's talking about and reading what you read, it sounds like we were going to go forward. But with that being said, my question to the council is, why, like somebody already stated, why would you turn it over to a third party to hold on to it and make, develop it, whereas you've got to go through a whole bunch of red tape if you ever do want to make any changes, where we could do it amongst ourselves? We don't need somebody else's input. The other thing that I wanted to state was, you know, being in the military, we always said, you know, if you have a problem, try and come with a solution. That botanical garden thing that you stated, that was absolutely outstanding. That should be something that maybe we should look into, and that solves everybody's problems.
Council brought that up five years ago.
I wasn't here five years ago, but, you know, we're here now.
But why not move forward, Dad? We don't need.
That's ridiculous.
That's probably part of the process. That's just another.
That's ridiculous.
Well, you've heard a lot from a lot of the citizens that just stood up here. There's no reason to beat a dead horse. That's just what I want to know, is why turn it over to a third party?
Well, if they would only be, they would only be executing the easement as prescribed by the city. You're not talking about they're maintain, they're not going to be maintaining it. They're going to make certain that whatever's decided by the city of Fairhope, that that is properly executed, and if it's not properly executed, they would make certain, they would go to court or whatever they have to do to stop it from being developed. Let's say a future council says, all right, there's a conservation easement on that, and we're going to build an office building on that, and let's say that that's not allowed. Well, that executor of that conservation easement would say, hold on, council, you can't do that, because that's not in the easement.
I can understand that, but my question is, we don't know what the city's going to need in 30, 20, 40, 50 years from now.
We don't, but I bet you we're going to need green space.
Yeah.
And I think that's what everybody agrees to.
Right, right. But again, like I said, I just think we're adding another layer that's not needed, whereas in the council and the citizen itself could do it. Red tape is redundant, and you can't move forward on anything if you add someone else into the mix of things. I mean, that's just how it goes. That's common sense, but that's all I have to say on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Kristin Arains. I'm at South Bayview Street. I'm at South Bayview Street and resident since two thousand and ten. It seems everybody agrees that this green space should be preserved and the bone of contention is the Weeks Bay Foundation and the easement granted to them. What would happen if the Weeks Foundation, which is a respectable and well-funded so far organization, goes out of the business?
Ms. McDowell, can you answer that question? I believe that we've, we've asked them that question.
I don't remember their answer. There's some kind of issue about trust. If they don't trust, if they don't resolve.
So I'm sorry, so we don't have the answer.
Don't have a clear answer to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've asked them that question. I don't remember their answer. It's a good question. Okay, anyone else? All right. All right, we're going to close public participation and move on to the agenda. Thank you for all those comments. Item number five is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Volker to perform professional engineering services, CE and I for rehab of the wastewater collection. Oh, I skipped council comments. I was in a hurry. I'd already checked it off my list. Councilman Conyers?
Yes, sir. Couple of comments. First, I would like to congratulate the Fairhope eight U All-Stars. We actually had two eight U All-Star teams that went to play in the state tournament in Muscle Shoals this weekend and one team was the state champ. So that team was coached by Kyle Calmede, Andy Wilcoxen, Daniel Bishop and Frank Kerbel. So to all those guys on the eight U team, congratulations for being state champs. Well done. Next, I just wanted to discuss just a few thoughts on the conservation easement and the DIAS Triangle. I know we've already had a lot of discussion on that. I think it's unfortunate that, that the wording is what the wording is on the agenda because it certainly created a misconception. Had we voted on it tonight, it was not going to authorize, Jack, to go out and sign us into a perpetual conservation easement without having to come back before the council. And I know the wording looks like that, but that was not ever the intent. And it's sort of, you had to start the process if you were going to go down that road somewhere. So you, you engage Weeks Bay, then you open it up for citizen input with Weeks Bay. You know, my, my personal opinion is that the long term, the end goal is conservation or preservation of that property. The vehicle to get there, well, that could possibly still be up in the air. Whether it's parkland, whether it's a conservation easement, whether it's some other kind of entity or form to get there, the end goal is preservation of that property. And we need green space and I think that if you, if I was going to piggyback on comments that Allison made, I mean, how many people feel that if, if the single tax colony had not put the restrictions on all the bayfront land that they did in the nineteen thirties, do we still feel that we would have that as parkland today? Or would that have been taken and converted into something else? I mean, more than likely, that would have been gone a long time ago. So, you know, it's important to get this right. Absolutely, there's going to be citizen input and engagement. And I apologize to everyone that, that the wording on the, on the agenda just was a misconception and it made it appear as though this was going to be a one and done and Jackson can go off by himself and negotiate for the city to sign this property a hundred and eight acres away for eternity. And, and it just wasn't going to be that way, but I just wanted to say my, my two cents on that. So look forward to more discussion.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, we heard words like lack of vision, reactionary, we need strategic planning. We heard the conspiracy theorists talked about the Fly Creek watershed preservation study that was done and reasons it was done. He also mentioned eleven point two million dollars costing the taxpayers. He wrote in his blog, it's twenty million. Facts really aren't important. He wrote that I built the concession stand at Sartre Fields. If you want to follow the fool, follow him, but he doesn't put the facts out. Skip Jones, I agree with everything you said. Chris and Allison Knight, thank you for your comments. Jim Kellin, agree with everything you said. And John Minaus, there is a comprehensive plan in place and we're not transferring the property as, as been discussed. We're, the Weeks Bay watershed basically has the teeth to enforce that this will never be developed. And so in this plan, and I've mentioned this before in the meetings, item four in this Weeks, the Fly Creek watershed study says the proxy, what goes through, talking about the property, what kind of trees. The proximity of this tract of land on the Eastern Shore Trail makes it ideal for passive recreation trail development, human use improvements, arboretum development, wildlife photography, et cetera. Other land protection avenues should be explored to protect remaining natural areas and open space within the watershed. Several options include land trust ownership, conservation easements, purchase or donation of development rights and a few other items. I just mentioned that because this is not reactionary. This is not, the council came up with this idea two weeks ago before we put it on the agenda. We didn't just come up with it a month ago. This study was done in two thousand and thirteen. I've talked about it in several council meetings. We talked about it in the work session about putting this property in the easement. So we just didn't come about. Several months ago, the council took action about authorizing the study of putting bike trails on the northern seventy-three acres. Nothing has been done on that. What I'm looking at, I'm looking at a valuable asset that the city already owns that is not being utilized. And the minimal cost of putting bike trails on a portion of it, and we're talking twenty, thirty thousand dollars to do the study and to put bike trails on there for citizens to use a piece of property we already own. I don't know what, and that would be allowed in the conservation easement. Like Jack's mentioned and other people have mentioned, when you draft the easement, you can say, we want to put bike trails, we want to put arboretum, we want to put a botanical garden, we want to put pavilions, a bathroom, parking areas. You can even put, I want to put an office building. But if you want to build three office buildings, you can't build three because it only says one. And that's the reason we want to protect this watershed. And citizen engagement, it's been talked about, Jack's talked about it, we're going to get citizen engagement. But the council does not have a team of employees to put out social media blogs, to put out emails to people. And this petition is mentioned. Took a picture, a couple of the comments. I'm signing because I'm tired of Fairhope being sold out to developers. In Fairhope, it's all about the money. What? You just signed a petition to stop development or to not stop development. I have concerns about our growth without the appropriate infrastructure. So I'm just saying, you've got three hundred signatures on a petition and probably half of them don't know what they signed. I'll listen to you, but if you don't have all the facts, it's a struggle. That's all I have.
Councilman Boone?
When we purchased this property, my main goal was to keep this property as a park and a public use property only with no development whatsoever. I think that was the agenda for everybody and I think that's the agenda for the council that's here tonight. Now Evans, when you say you talked to me, which you did, you can't say that you talked to me, then I'd say what I told you. Which was.
You were wonderful.
Which was, rest assured, the public is going to have a chance to say what they want to have and I will guarantee you that. They will have a chance to say it and I'll, and I'll say that they will. But we have to start with something and the problem I'm having is, I guess one of the issues is the perpetuity and I would hate to see, it doesn't matter if it's conservation easement or what it is, it's a land restriction on the deed or whatever you want to do, but I want this property protected for public park service forever. I don't ever want to see it developed period whatsoever. And the only way I knew to come up with this was a conservation easement, which would guarantee, the only thing that's going to be laid out is what we, the citizens and the city want to do. Because I don't, other than keeping it a park, I don't care if you put bike trails out there, walking trails. I think an arboretum would be beautiful, would be great, or anything of this nature, as long as it's held to a public service for the citizens of this town and never developed. That's my only interest. And basically, all this other rhetoric that we're having, it was going too fast and you got to start somewhere. This is a process in order to get this done and in order to get the public sentiment here, the mayor says we need to do it now. You can do it now, you can do it later, but it's going to come. And all I'm trying to do is protect this property for future, that my children's children's children don't see buildings on that property out there for whatever reason. That's all I'm looking at. And if anybody else doesn't have that same theory, then I'm, you know, sorry, but we're going to have to disagree. That's all I got.
I think I've said enough, but I will say one thing just to address the perpetuity of it. And that is, is that if you don't conserve it forever, there is going to come a time when somebody wants to raid that property for greed. If, if we talked about New York Central Park two meetings ago and, and the foresight they had to protect that. Well, you know, I believe it was in the, maybe the early nineteen seventies, New York City was in bankruptcy. You know, I'm sure they could have sold off, you know, Central Park and probably got themselves out of debt, but who would have ever wanted that? Now, that's an extreme example, but you don't know what the next person's going to do. And so when I say I don't trust it, well, if I can guarantee that it's never going to be developed and that's what people want, that's what, that's what we're trying to do. And if you disagree with me, I respect your opinion, but I don't think that the majority of people in Fairhope disagree with me. And I, I have engaged the citizens and asked what they want. And a lot of people brought up some good questions. We don't have all the answers tonight, but we're going to get them. And once again, this, this vote tonight, which is going to be tabled for some other reasons as well, is, is, was not about creating the easement, but rather engaging Weeks Bay Foundation to assist with this conservation easement. Nothing more, nothing less. With that, I'll close council comments and I'll get back to item five on the agenda, which is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is authorized to execute a contract with Volker to perform professional engineering services for the rehab of the wastewater collection system for the sewer department with a not to exceed amount of forty thousand dollars. Entertain a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. I looked for, Jake, can, can you answer a question or two? I looked for you. You guys took a break in between, which I don't, I don't blame you, in between the work session and the meeting. We had had, we had thirty-five thousand dollars budgeted last year and I think we, did we go through all of that or some of that being carried over and now we need another?
What, what, I didn't realize this and I do apologize to the council. I took over for the predecessor in April and I didn't realize this contract was running from April to April. There was a gap of time where we didn't, you know, we had a change up, we didn't do anything. So the, the contract runs basically from the end of April to the end of next April. Now, this contract will only run to December thirty-first because the bulk of the contract is over the December thirty-first and we'll have to decide how to move forward from that. So this one's going to end on December thirty-first because the big contract ends.
And what they would do with the forty thousand would be, they would get as much of this cured in place pipe.
They set up.
Completed as they could and charged as, as they go, right?
What they do is, is they make sure not only, they put out the work orders, they work with us to find the problem areas and then they put out the work orders to Suncoast and Suncoast comes and works through then. And then they have somebody comes out and specs it, it's on site with them to make sure it's done right and the test to perform properly.
Okay. Council, do y'all have any, any questions? Sorry I had to ask that because it's a non-budgeted, but it doesn't, it doesn't flow with the budget year.
Right, right.
Okay. All right. Hearing no other discussion, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Item six is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number one of bid number oh twenty dash eighteen to disaster debris removal and disposal, twenty eighteen with Crowder Gulf for an additional year per the terms and conditions of the original contract and based on the unit cost specified in the bid tabulation. Council, this is just a one-year extension of the existing. It doesn't cost us anything if we don't have a disaster. Of course, if we do have a disaster, the unit cost is per the bid tabulation. Do y'all have any questions for Mr. Johnson on that? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve this extension.
So moved.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none.
I will say this, in order, in order for FEMA to reimburse us, this is needed to be in place. It's easier for us to get our money back.
Right.
That's one reason, that's another reason that we go ahead and get this done every year.
Right. And I believe that we did pay for someone to come in and consult us on that, preparing of that bid before we let it out for bid and it had some new, you know, terms and, and not not terms, but made sure that it covered all the bases, I would say. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of executing, executing the contract for another year, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, council. Item seven is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number two for the hydrofluoric silic acid for the water department with wasting water specialties for an additional one year as per the terms and conditions of the original contract with a cost of three hundred and thirty dollars per fifty-five gallon drum. Entertain a motion to execute the contract?
So moved.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, council. Item number eight is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute extension number two for zinc orthophosphate and TKKP chemicals for the water department with Thornton, Musso, Bellman for an additional one year per the terms and conditions of the original contract. Cost would be a dollar three per pound for the zinc orthophosphate and a dollar thirty-four per pound for the TKKP chemicals with a total annual cost not to exceed fifty-one thousand dollars. Entertain a motion to execute that extension?
So moved.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number nine is a resolution to award a bid for employee uniforms to Riverbend Enterprises with a total bid proposal of approximately one hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Any questions on that, council? Not entertain a motion to purchase the uniforms or award the bid?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay. I did want to point out, council, that it was an increase due in part to some items being deleted by the company. It is thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars over budget. I don't know that, I was looking for the bid tabulation. These were still the lowest cost. Jim or Kim? Okay. Did you have something add on that, Richard? You don't even get to wear one, do you?
No, I don't. I don't qualify. And please understand, this is the pre-placed bid for all the uniforms that's used throughout the city, Public Works, Public Utilities. And again, those, the actual aggregate purchase that could lead up to that number would be if we bought uniforms for every person brand new in a given year. So that was, that's how they get to come to that number. So we can only spend what's in Public Works budget for uniforms. Gas is the same, everything else. And I will tell you that, that gas is required to move to the, the FR protection and that is a little bit more expensive, you know, protective uniform and that's probably one of the cost drivers there. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask you, I was, I was looking at some of these bids and some, in some cases, there are other bidders that are less expensive. Should we consider breaking those bids up in the future or could we not write it such that we could award portions of the bid to one company and other portions to another company?
And I tell you, I wish DD was here because they, they struggled mightily with this and, and there is some background information you may have seen where they said on, on these particulars, this one was lowest in X out of X and one was about forty-one out of seventy categories and that was how they came to that recommendation. So it was a difficult, a difficult bid to evaluate, but they, their recommendation is as you see before you.
I would, I would just ask y'all to, you know, maybe she can just give us a quick explanation. If you look at the spring, summer, Public Works, spring, summer, uniform B, they're
about, there's one bidder about 25% less than the winter, and then on the public works, fall/winter, that's roughly 20 out of 90, so roughly 22% less.
And just, and maybe we could get a ruling from y'all, how you would feel about this. I, I was a big advocate to keep public works separate from utilities, since we're paid out of two different orgs. Public works is a general fund, utilities is a utility fund, and, and public works uniforms are easy. We have a shirt, a pant, and a few accessories, and everybody wears the same, whereas in the utilities, they have different safety requirements and things of that nature. But again, purchasing came back and says, no, you can't break it into parts. It's violation of bid law, and my argument is if it's two different organizations, two different operations funded out of two different funds, I think they could be treated separately and, and have a public bid, because I think we would have been better off for our uniforms that don't have any safety protection, part of it is to, to get that price. But they followed what they felt was the proper procedure, and that's where we are today.
Well, not to belabor the point, but it seems like there would be some kind of way that they could write it in there that, 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 you know, as long as you let the bidder know that you could pick and choose different categories to award the bid to the lowest bidder. It seems to be, seems to be there, there could be some, something written into, written into that.
And, and I, God bless Dee Dee and Jennifer. If you say uniforms right now, they throw things at you.
I don't want their job, but-
So, all right, thank you.
Okay. All right, counsel. Where are we at, Clark? Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do y'all have any more questions? Okay, if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item 10 is a resolution. City of Fairhope vote to purchase SCADA System Annual Software Support Maintenance Agreements for the electric, water, and gas departments from surveillance technology as a sole-source distributor and authorize procurement based on the optional allow by the Code of Alabama contractual services and purchases of commodities for which there's only one vendor or supplier. The cost will be, I'm shortening that a little bit, the cost will be $21,630. I'll entertain a motion to purchase the software?
So moved.
Second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 11 is a resolution. City of Fairhope approves the procurement of the fiscal year 2019 inventory supply of gas tubing, which would be 21,000 feet for the gas department with a cost of $16,590. Entertain a motion for that purchase, please?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 12 is a resolution. City of Fairhope approves the procurement of a remote methane leak detector for the gas department to be purchased from the Health Consultants Incorporated as sole-source provider in the state of Alabama. They're exempt from the formal bid pursuant to the Code of Alabama with a cost not to exceed $15,350. Can somebody tell me whether that's budgeted? Ooh, under. Under by $65,000 somehow. That, where's Richard? Can he leave again? Oh, can you explain that? Did it come in that cheap, or were there other things that were budgeted?
It was budgeted for-
Ah, that's what it looks like, doesn't it?
There was a budget $80,000 to, to, to Creek Crossings, and we're gonna prolong that so I can get this taken care of, so we can do this in-house. This cost was actually $100,000 to have somebody hired outside to do this on a yearly basis, so we're gonna do it in-house ourselves. So, I took the money out of the two Creek Crossings that was listed for $80,000.
Okay. All right. Counsel, any questions? Okay. Do I have a motion and a second, Clark?
No, you don't.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve-
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Thank you for taking that on. Item 13 is a resolution. City of Fairhope approves the procurement of Neptune gas meters for the gas department for inventory to be purchased from Consolidated Pipe and Supply as a sole-source provider in the state of Alabama. The units must fit into our existing standardized system and are exempt from formal bid pursuant to the Code of Alabama. The estimated number of units is 450 at 88 per unit and a total cost of $39,600. Entertain a motion to purchase these meters?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 14 is a resolution. City of Fairhope approves the procurement of gas meters with connections and regulators for the gas department for inventory to be purchased from Ed Young Sales as a sole-source provider for Elster American Meter Company in the state of Alabama. The units must fit into our existing standardized system and are exempt from formal bid pursuant to the Code of Alabama. The estimated number of units is 448 gas meters and accessories at a cost of $73,952.24. Counsel, if you wish, I'll entertain a motion to purchase these gas meters and connections?
So moved.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 15 is a resolution that City Council pursuant to section 7.01 of the City of Fairhope Personnel Rules, Policies, and Procedures grants July the 5th, 2019, as a city holiday for this fiscal year, and will be observed by all city personnel. Emergency and on-call employees will report to work as needed. Entertain a motion, pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Grant the holiday. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 16, a resolution that authorizes me to execute a conservation easement agreement. It was really not executing the agreement, but to entertain into an agreement with Wick's Bay Foundation for two conservation easements. Does read bad, sure does. Counsel, my recommendation is to table this pending a legal opinion from the Attorney General as to whether or not this is allowed in the state of Alabama. We do know, we have, have been told that there are municipalities in the state of Alabama that have executed conservation agreements with other conservation groups, but we don't know what permissions they had, and we don't know exactly the, the terms of those. So, I think it prudent to table this until we get an opinion from the Attorney General and then move forward. Any other comments or questions on this?
I mean, I guess while we're, you know, if we, if we table it, and while we're waiting on that opinion, it wouldn't hurt to also investigate other alternatives that would accomplish the same, the same end goal.
Such as parks?
Exactly.
Right. Yep, I agree with that. Okay.
That's the way to do it.
Any other discussion? Okay, well-
I'd like to make a motion we table this resolution.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this resolution. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 16 is tabled. Item 17 was pulled, and Mayor, I'm sorry that I didn't tell you before you put that presentation together for your mayor's report, and since it was on there, I, I just, I didn't know whether or not we wanted to pull it until I got here, and I couldn't call the council and poll them and say it's on there, you only pull it. I couldn't get a vote like that. So, I had to, just to keep the sanctity of the council, I, I had to wait to, to pull that, so, thank you for bearing with us on that. Item 18 is a resolution that the compensation and job classification plan along with the grade order sheet be amended and approved to add the job positions of community development supervisor at a grade 23 and project coordinator at a grade 20. The job descriptions and grades are paid for the same and delete the position of Director of Economic Community Development, grade 28, and amend the budget to reflect these One part of this, do we actually have a Director of Economic and Community Development, or is that not called the Director of Community Affairs? That's, that's one question that I have for it.
Regardless of the title, I'm just talking about the grade and doing this.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. Do I have an amended resolution? I had no second. Motion fails due to lack of a second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll amend it. You know, either say we leave the director position or delete it as asked and add the community development supervisor, rather in favor of creating two positions. So, it's up to the mayor. She wants to leave the director position or community development supervisor.
Like I said, there's no reason to decrease it to supervisor if we're not going to add an additional person. Had I known this was gonna take two months to, to figure out, I just would have done the internal promotion and never dealt with it, but-
Councilman Brown, you mentioned the first two. If you were to amend that, what about, there's three parts to that resolution. Did you leave that third part in?
Would, uh-
I mean, if you're gonna make a motion to amend it, I wasn't clear on that.
Either create the community development supervisor or leave the director of economic development. One of the two. I'm not, I'm not in favor of creating two positions in that department.
Then you would just leave everything the way it is. I mean, there's no question that this position has accomplished a lot this term and will continue to do so. It's brought in a lot of money into the city. We need to be able to pay somebody to do that. Y'all asked for this, for Personnel Board to look at this. They did and recommend it. I just don't, why, why ask the Personnel Board for things like this if you're not gonna consider it?
Well, certain council members want Personnel Board to look at it.
So, y'all don't need the Personnel Board to look at these in, in the future?
The Personnel, no, you need to have the Personnel Board look at it because the Personnel-
But does everybody feel that way?
The Personnel Board does not recommend on whether or not these jobs should be put in position or not. They recommend that they're viable jobs throughout the county and that these are the correct grades and the correct job descriptions. That's what they're recommending, only.
You know, I have some questions about some of people's job descriptions versus what they're doing on a day-to-day basis, and I have some hesitation about approving at least the second position. You know, I, I really, Mayor, I want to ask you about the utilities assistants position and what they have been doing, because I believe that they have been fulfilling more of a role in community development and not assisting the utilities. And I have reason to believe that the person in that job has been writing speeches for you which attack me and other council members.
That is absolutely untrue.
I said I had reason to believe it.
I, I don't know why you use these public meetings to attack me on things you don't even know about, and I'm telling you are not true. It's ridiculous. Every job description says "as needed." You have to do that because we are in such a reactionary mode. We don't have enough help right now to have the level of services that we've had. Now, y'all have cut continuously, three times, communication. We all do communication.
Mayor-
This is just, you, you, I mean, it's not council's role to manage personnel on day-to-day business.
Well, Mayor-
Your accusations are, I don't know why you do this.
Well, Mayor, two meetings ago, you attacked me and the council, and I, I defended myself, and I have reason to believe that that speech that you read at the council meeting was written by an employee-
It was not.
-that was supposed to be working as a utilities administrative assistant.
Unbelievable.
Councilman Brown, can you confirm that theory?
It was in the email, yes.
You can confirm that?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. It's very unfortunate that that wound up in somebody's email that wasn't intended for them, but it did.
Unbelievable. I mean, I, I write every single thing that I, I put out, every single thing. If anything, I usually have helped toning it down some, but that is, I mean, ridiculous. Nobody's writing anything.
All right, Councilman Brown-
And you've accused me of these things before, Jack. I don't get it at all. It, it's like you, you try to make it sound like I, I can't do these things, and undermining me and, and making everybody believe that I'm not qualified in, in certain areas, it's actually worked for me.
I'm actually just trying to determine-
But this is just-
I'm trying to determine whether or not-
Whatever I ask employees to do for the city, for city business, is absolutely my role to do, and when you don't have enough full-time employees, and, and you were part of last term, you were a part of not adding any full-time employees when you had over 33% growth. We're trying to make up for that now, so there's lots of employees right now doing a lot more than what their job description says because we simply do not have the experience and the number of employees to fulfill these duties.
Well, I'm trying to make a determination whether or not I want to vote on adding these positions. Councilman Brown, do you want to read that? Do you want to read that amended resolution? Again, just state that again, please.
amended to say just leaving the Director of Economic and Community Development position in place.
Is that what you'd like to do then?
Correct.
At the grade 28?
Correct.
Okay. So, that would say, well, then you're not amending anything.
Well, I've got a question, right?
That's true.
What if you, if the concern is the utility, what if you leave this as it is, but in addition to deleting a position of economic and community development, if you deleted the utility admin assistant, the position that you're saying was not-
Why in the world would you do that when utilities needs more help than anything?
I'm just throwing out an idea to try to get-
I mean, utilities has more infrastructure going on than, than anybody else.
I would like to do it because I don't think they're doing the job that they were hired to do. That's why-
This is not council's role to determine what they do. Okay, it is-
Council's role is to phone positions on a needed basis.
We need way more than what we've been asking for. Way more. We've had 44% growth since 2018. That doesn't account this year.
So-
I mean, you, you just think we set, we keep employees at the same rate forever?
So, the, um-
It just makes no sense.
So, Councilman Brown, if you left in the Director of Economic Community Development at grade, at grade 28, then you don't have to make any changes. You don't need a motion. The motion failed for lack of a second, and it would-
Just stays in place.
It would just remain as it is then, so there would be no motion needed to be made. However, I would ask for somebody to eliminate the position which is not filled right now of the utilities administrative assistant, and-
Why don't you wait till next one, because Jay will be here too, and I know he would not agree to do that. I mean, you're just gonna make up new resolutions the day of the meetings?
Well, I'm not making it up.
Well, you are creating this. There, there was no advertisement for this.
Yes, that happens a lot. I'll wait at your request, but I don't, I don't see it as it, you know, but if that, if that goes filled between now and the next meeting? I mean, and let me ask you this too. So, you advertised for the Director of Economic Community Development director, correct? You did advertise for that?
I don't know exactly what was advertised, Leslie.
It was advertised. I, I do know what. It was advertised, and it was advertised for about one day.
No, no, it wasn't.
No, I-
No, it wasn't.
I pulled it up. It was advertised for-
It was advertised for a week. This is gorgeous lies.
Well, I had someone go to look at that. Well, I had someone go to look at that. It was there for a day and then it was, then it was gone. And then it was filled by a person from within. So I do wonder, Leslie, if it was actually posted for seven days, which is required.
If I can approach?
You can, yes.
Um, no, it was, it was posted for seven days. I don't post anything for less than that. And if you would like, I could pull up Munis and it will show you the date that it was entered, which I don't have any control over changing. And it'll show you the day that it was closed. And it will show you other applicants in there too.
I'll, I'll stop by maybe one day this week and take a look at it.
I'll, I'll be happy to show it to you or anyone else that would like to see it.
Okay. We'll move on to item number 19, which is a resolution that the compensation and job classification plan and grade order sheet be amended and approved for the job description and title from tourism and events coordinator to tourism and events manager. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 20 is an appointment to the airport authority. This will be for a six-year term. The nominee is Don Lagard for a term ending March 2025. I will entertain a motion to appoint this nominee.
So moved.
Say it. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Airport authority recommends.
I will say that the airport authority has discussed this with the mayor and airport authority mayor are in agreement on this appointment. Okay. All those in favor of the nominee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 21 is a request from Brandon Gertz, location manager with I Still Believe, requesting approval to place scissor lift, scissor lift and a small low wattage lights at the Fairhope docks near the boat slips for filming on June 25th, 2019. I'll entertain a motion to grant this request?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Ben Smith, 217 South Mobile Street. I wonder if he can get an update about the clock and the hotel?
Do you have something?
No, I didn't know. Do you mean the flower clock?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, I don't mean the.
No.
I mean the hotel.
I'm going to defer to Councilman Brown because he has spoken to the developer since I have. And Councilman Robinson, I believe, has also spoken to them since I have. So I, I can't give you an update on that. The last I heard, they were still trying to negotiate, work out an equitable deal. And I think the key word there is equitable, not necessarily a, a this for that, you know, but something that would be fair to all parties. So Councilman Brown, can you, any way to expand on that route?
That's good. That's enough. We're still working on it.
Yes. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close public participation. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, counsel.